Roll call the City Council for the meeting on Wednesday, September 4th, 2013, 9:00 AM. Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rankutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, I ask that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way. I also ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom to be able to make the best decisions for the citizens of the Erie community.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes from the August 21st meeting and the bills for payment on 9/6 and 9/13. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rankutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Do we have any requests for a repository sale this morning? Any requests for a repository sale? Hearing none. Brings us to our Citizens to Be Heard segment. Please step forward.
My name is Paul Mucy, and I live at Friendship Towers, 111 East 11th. And I wanted to mention that I talked to the lady in the office early part of the week about the handicap on 11th Street with her outdated. And I called Jessica and I got her answer machine. I misunderstood the woman. I thought she said there was money in the budget for it. I thought she said. And then when I asked her again, she said she don't know if there's money in the budget for to put new handicap curbs on 11th Street. I noticed on the north side, on 11th Street, on the northwest corner, they got it painted where they're gonna take the one curb out. I think they're, I don't know if they're gonna take it out, but they got it painted all around. And I don't know if they're just gonna do one and do the rest later. But I said on a while back, on the south side west corner where the sidewalk dropped a little bit, and that, on 11th Street, Leventon French. And then another thing I wanted to ask you. You think they'll ever put the buses back on State Street in the future? If that will ever happen? And another thing I wanted to ask you. You think they'll ever get electric buses? I know they have propane buses where there's no smoke or nothing. It's just heat coming out of the pipes, the tailpipes and that. And I was just wondering, thinking the money they would save if they went for electric buses. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Council.
Thank you for your comments today. Good morning, Father.
Good morning, Members of City Council and Mr. President. My name is Father Jerry Perscaro, 921 East Avenue. Over the past three years and three months, 4,562 vehicle operators has spent a combined total of over $6 million in detour fuel mileage that amounts to about $1,315.21 per vehicle. Creating a new Buffalo Road interchange with new on-off ramps would do little to reduce the cost to vehicle operators. Here's why. The distance from East 12th Street and East Avenue to Buffalo Road and Pennsylvania Avenue without the McBride viaduct is 1,998 feet longer one-way and 3,996 feet longer round trip per day if a Buffalo Road interchange and off-ramps were created. When you multiply the figures, over a hundred-year period of time, that amounts to well more than $25 million that a bridge would cost to build on that location. Anyone who says it's cheaper to have a Buffalo Road interchange and on-off ramps doesn't know what they're talking about. They can't add, subtract, multiply, or divide all the expenses that are involved to drivers. Lower-income and minority environmental justice populations living north and south of the McBride viaduct, they can hardly afford these additional costs. That's not to mention the businesses, churches, schools, nonprofit agencies, and clubs. When people have less money in their pocket and end up putting what money they do have into their vehicle, then the economy suffers because people have less money to spend at the stores. I'd like to shift the focus to currently there are nine directional traffic driving patterns on the east side Bayfront Connector Highway and the current Buffalo Road off-ramp. If a new created Buffalo Road interchange is made along with on-off ramps, five additional traffic driving patterns would be created for a total of 14 different directions traffic would be moving in with no proven track record, no traffic data or history. No known average daily traffic data or history, no pedestrian accident data or history, no bicyclist accident data or history, no traffic congestion data or history, no traffic congestion data or history for the newly created on-ramp for Buffalo Road to the east side Bayfront Connector Highway, and no vehicle or congestion data for newly expanded off-ramps between the east side Bayfront Connector Highway and Buffalo Road. There's also no vehicle accident or congestion data for Buffalo Road on the Buffalo Road Bridge with the additional on- and off-ramp traffic, and no vehicle accident or congestion data for Buffalo Road at the Pennsylvania Avenue intersection for traffic traveling north on Pennsylvania Avenue to East 20th or east on Buffalo Road towards Brandis with all the additional vehicles that there would be. I looked up the U.S. EPA National Vehicle and Fuel Emissions Laboratory Average Emissions Table for an average passenger car. It comes out to 2.9 grams per mile hydrocarbons, 22 grams per mile carbon monoxide, 1.5 grams per mile nitrogen oxide, and .8 pound per mile carbon dioxide. If the additional pollution generated by 4,562 cars per year using new Buffalo Road intersection and on-off ramps is calculated, the hydrocarbons would amount to 10,012 grams. Carbon monoxide would increase to 75,957.2 grams. Nitrogen oxides would increase to 5,178.9 grams, and carbon dioxide would increase to 2,762.08 pounds of emissions. Vehicle emissions would be drastically increased. Air pollution would be drastically increased. Ambient air quality would be drastically reduced. Ozone pollution would be drastically increased. Carbon monoxide and carbon dioxide emissions would be drastically increased. Nitrous oxides and hydrocarbon emissions would be drastically increased. The conclusion is, a new Buffalo Road intersection and on-off ramps at Buffalo Road and Pennsylvania Avenue would violate EPA ambient air quality standards, NAAQS for carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, nitrous oxide, and hydrocarbons. It would also violate Executive Order 12898 of the Environmental Justice in Minority and Low-Income Populations by exposing minorities and low-income populations to significantly higher air pollution in the form of vehicle emissions. Pedestrians, elderly, the handicapped, senior citizens would suffer from poor air quality because of the longer distance and the higher amount of emissions from vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Any other citizens to be heard this morning? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none? Oh, we got one more. Oh, we got...
Public hearing.
........................
That's a zoning at the public hearing. That's scheduled for 9:30. Thanks. Mr. Clem.
Ordinance is for final passage. Council file ordinance 15,00846 and ordinance submitting ordinance number 269058. Traffic code of the city of Erie by the installation of stop signs at 24 intersections. East 42nd and Rice, East 42nd and Davison, 41st and Wagner, 39th and Wagner, Wagner and Hope, East 41st and Roxanna, East 42nd and Roxanna, East 44th and Roxanna, East 35th and Reed, Sassafras Street and West 41st, East 39th and Essex Avenue. Motion of Mr. Mursky, second amendment to Mr. Witherspoon. Council file ordinance bill number 15,00846 now known as official file ordinance 25, 2013, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rankutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Winarsky. Under old business, we have a resolution by Mr. Brennan, second by Mr. Mursky, that the city solicitors hereby authorized and directed to prepare an ordinance to close and vacate the alley running north 130 feet from 19th Street between Cherry Street and Walnut Street upon the recommendation of the City Planning Commission. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Skip over the public hearing. For now, we go to new business. Resolution by Mr. Winarsky, second by Mr. Witherspoon.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we move the balance of the agenda.
Second. Second. Any separations? Hearing none, Mr. Clem.
Voting on the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rankutso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. That takes us to committee reports if you care to get into that before the public hearing.
Yeah, yes, we will. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of reports here. At our Erie Redevelopment Authority meeting, I just want to give a brief update of some of the different initiatives they're doing, working on right now. There's some exterior facade improvements at the McGarvey Building, which is Junior's at 14th and State. That's being done right now. Lead grant work continues. Currently, the work is a little behind schedule, but the program is going very well. The Union Square Project, they're discussing the next phase of the development of the Fourth River Development and looking at a possible future addition in that planning for a parking ramp in the future. And also, this project planning order will be coordinated with the uptown, updated downtown master plan. And also, there is several council members know, there was a land bank briefing a few weeks ago, and that is still being reviewed and that discussion will continue. Couple other updates. The, there's a meeting for the McClellan Park a couple of weeks ago at Deal School to talk about the proposed developments going on there. The city received a grant for a new road and some parking areas. And we're also discussing a, starting the, a dog park in the future for the master plan. So the roadway parking area and a fenced area for the dog park is being considered. And we're gonna be meeting with the Deal Burton Neighborhood Watch to really discuss some of those future details soon. And just one final item here. The Erie 911 Memorial, the construction has started. The foundation was installed a couple, last week actually. And the rest of the memorial will continue to go as funding comes in place and as the contractors are coordinated. And the goal is to have a, some type of ceremony on September 11th, which is actually coming up pretty quick next week. And we'll make an announcement to invite people to a small ceremony there. And that's very important, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Evans.
Good morning. Two or three quick things. The last Housing Authority meeting had a couple of points of interest. The first is that the Housing Authority has been evaluated in terms of their performance in administering the Section 8 housing program, and they received a score of 97 out of 100, which is the highest score that they had ever received. So I think that is a testament to the excellent job they do in managing the Section 8 housing program. Another thing with regard to the Section 8 program is that they recently won an appeal on a piece of litigation, the Henry case, in which two women died in a fire in one of the Section 8 housing units. And the Section 8 unit had been declared by the Housing Authority as deficient in terms of needing to have corrections done. Those corrections were done. And that was really the basis for the authority's win, is the fact that the smoke detectors were installed, second means of egress was installed. So all of the precautions that could have been taken were taken, and that's what the court decided. With regard to the Port Authority, I attended their meeting the other day. Two things of note. First, they did let the contracts to repair the west wall of the Donjon facility at the port, which will keep that shipyard going for years to come. And that's a source of a lot of jobs in our community, and so that's an excellent thing. In addition, they are currently working with County Council to try and secure funding to build a permanent restroom facility at the Liberty Pier rather than using the Portojons that are used for all the events down there now. So I think that'll be a very welcome addition. Obviously, they need to find the funds to do it. Went to a couple car cruises recently, and I can say we really have a lot of car enthusiasts in Erie. The Fraternal Order Police had their annual cruise-in up at the casino last Friday and had hundreds of cars there. And then, of course, the previous Friday, there was a cruise-in here on State Street. And I'd just like to publicly acknowledge George Lyons of Contemporary Motor Car, who organizes those car cruises on State two or three times a year. That's a lot of work to do that. And it's a lot of fun when, you know, many, many people come to those, and it's really a good time. Certainly attended, as many of us did, the, both the Polish and German festivals recently. Both were extremely well attended and very well done. Finally, I attended the Gannon Rec Center groundbreaking the other day and was pleased to hear that many of the new facilities they're building at the Gannon Rec Center will not only be available to students and faculty, but to members of the community. So there's gonna be a human performance center, for example, that's gonna be available to help people analyze where they are from a fitness perspective and get on a healthier lifestyle and a healthier exercise regimen. And I think that's a great asset to the community. And they're, so they're gonna reach out with these facilities and make them community-wide and not exclusively for the Gannon community. So that was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the groundbreaking and the, excuse me, the ribbon-cutting of the Airport Authority, and it was an outstanding event. And I was very pleased and happy to see that Lou Perico, who has put a lot of time into the authority, to see his dream come true. And they honored him by placing a huge rock with a plaque bolted into it in his honor. And that was an exciting day, I think, for the Erie community and Erie County. Also, I'd like to say, we're gonna, we have lost Chief Franklin, who I've worked with very closely, but we gained a new chief and, from Deputy Chief Bowers to Chief Bowers, Randy Bowers. And I've worked with Chief Bowers for many years in various capacities, and he will do an outstanding job working with his force. And I was pleased to see the mayor made that appointment. The Summer Basketball League was very successful. We had 206 young men this year, from ages 10 to 16. Some outstanding players, some good team players. But most of all, the volunteers came out this year en masse. We had more than we need, but we put them all to work. Again, thanks to the business sponsors and especially to the two major sponsors, the city of Erie. Thanks Doug and Dave Moverhill and the mayor, of course, and also First Energy Foundation were the two major ones. And John, you would be pleased to know that John Haran and the Housing Authority for the past 23 years, along with several others, but John Haran sponsors four teams, and all his kids are residents of the Erie Housing Authority. And I will be getting a detailed report out in a pamphlet form. And also, he told me, "Don't say anything," but I will anyway. John Evans is a supporter of the summer league. He's a sponsor. He's sponsored three teams this year, and one of his teams came in second. So if he...
They're better than I am.
Yeah, if, you know, John increased that sponsorship next year, I can see, guarantee you, guarantee you, he'll come in first. You know, the mayor's team came in first in one division, and I wonder why. And First Energy Foundation team came in first in the 1516 division. So that 10 to 12 division is still open, John. I'm only teasing, my friend. I appreciate your support for the kids in the city of Erie. We had 90% participation from city youth, and the other 10% came from the county. So I will be approaching the county and letting them know that we do have some of their players in the league. And the most important thing, other than playing the game, was to see the parents, the parents of white players are so comfortable and relaxed on East 19th Street between French and Holland where we play, that they brought their blankets out on a sunny day, and they were getting the suntan. I don't think they seen one game. They're just enjoying themselves. And there was no problems. That's what the league's about, to bring these kids together. And I have a special player, and I will be presenting an award to him at a later date here at Council. But I want to thank everyone in the city for supporting the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, because I did have a mouth surgery last week, so they think I can't talk. I can't talk well, but I can still talk. Just two quick things. Mr. Mucy brought up a question about handicap ramp on 11th and French. I did look, and I didn't see that area on the paving list. Ms. Beck, you might know for sure. But typically, when a street is paved, that triggers the repair or the redo of the handicap curb ramp. Am I correct with that?
I believe that's correct.
So I don't believe that would be being addressed in this paving cycle, as far as I can tell. Hopefully, in the future, it will be addressed. And I did attend the aggregate pension boards and the O and E pension meetings, and we will be discussing those further in our finance. And that's, that will conclude my report. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Mursky, we have time for you before our public hearing.
All right, just a few things really quick regarding the Convention Center Authority. Erie Insurance Arena will be opening in September, so they're working diligently on getting that done. Remediation continues on the GAF property. It's been a long process, but they're still working on that, making sure that it's clean for any future development. Again, to reiterate when Mr. Witherspoon said, "Welcome to Chief Bowers and new Deputy Chief, D.J. Furman." We look forward to working with them. Going along with police, please remember the school zones. I teach at East High School and in that East Avenue District especially, that people just fly through there. And same with East Lake Road, East 6th Street. So please be aware that there's children out there in those school zones. And finally, attended the Neighborhood Watch Council meeting. It's good to see that they're reorganizing. And, you know, I was pleasantly surprised when I went to the meeting at how professional it was and how everyone conducted themselves appropriately and professionally. And to the Mercyhurst neighborhood, we got your invitation for your meeting, and I will be up there next Monday. And again, finally, with Dave Brennan, we attended the McClellan Park meeting for the dog park, for the Fabrizi Dog Park and the road that they're putting in. And that's an amazing piece of property up there, a city park that has the potential to become the Scott Park or the Asbury Woods of the east side. So I'm looking forward to working with the neighbors up there in the city to develop that in a way that maintains the integrity of the park as it is, but also enhances it for people to go in and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mursky. I believe at this time, we'll go with our public hearing. Mr. Clem?
She gets set up.
When you're set, we're ready. Good morning, everyone. Right now, we're gonna have a public hearing regarding the waterfront convention, conditional use at 359 Short Street. I would like to have the people who are for this rezoning, please step forward and... Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Bob Rose. I've been a carpenter in Erie for 39 years, and I own Bob Rose Carpentry. Judy Farrar lives at 359 Short Street, which isn't too far away from here. And she approached me in the spring to build an addition on her house. She has plans on getting married, and she's looking towards the future to increase her living space in the house to consolidate two households into one. She also would like to bring the laundry from the basement up onto the first floor so she can, she doesn't have to go down in the basement to do her laundry. Right now, she has one very small cramped bathroom in the second floor also. So she'd like to have a bathroom on the first floor that has walk-in shower to make her life easier. We, we've been going through the process for about three months now. We've gotten approval for the project from the zoning commission and the planning commission. And we're here to ask for your approval to do it, too. She was okay with all the rules and regulations that are required, like the back set from the property line and everything. But the one thing is, because in the waterfront, there's a rule that you can only increase the square footage of your house up to 20% of the existing square footage. And she was over by about 200 square feet. So that's why we've had to go through this process. The, even though it's over by 200 square feet, the footprint of the house doesn't change too much on the ground. It only comes out away from the house on the east side of the house, 10 feet, and it goes down the side of the house, 21 feet. Most of the square footage is in the second story. It increases her master bedroom by quite a bit. It increases her master bedroom by quite a bit, because the house jogs in on the second story. There's a lot of extra square footage up there for her. The bedroom will have a walk-in closet now, and the downstairs part of the, that's mostly what the second story is, and the downstairs is the bathroom and one extra room. What she can use is either conservatory to sit out in, you know, and get some sunshine in the wintertime, or whatever she wants to use it for. I do have some plans here that have been drawn up by Frontier Lumber. They're very detailed plans. These are just the elevations. I don't know if you want to see them or not. You could see what the outside of the addition is. Really nice-looking addition. Actually adds to the looks of her house. And here's some preliminary drawings, plans that were drawn up, just to show the layout, if you wanted to see them.
They have them.
So, okay. Want me to bring them up here?
They have.
Oh, do you? Okay. These are actually newer plans that were drawn up for the addition, though. We did make a couple of little changes since those plans. One is we moved the window on the second story into what was a closet on those plans. The reason for that was to give her a big window for aggression. If there's ever a fire, it's up to code, so she can get out, and there's an extra way to get out. It also gives her a view of the bayfront, larger window. Instead of having a closet there, she has a view of the bayfront. With the new plans, just to let you know, we did make a small change to the roof also. When we got into structural challenges, it simplified things, eliminated the need for an extra beam to support the roof, because we were cutting out a large section of the roof. We modified the roof design to actually give it a more balanced gable and eliminate the need for a beam. It'll have a truss now that supports where we're cutting out the existing roof, so it simplifies things, and it's just a better design, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. These changes, are they approved by the design review and the planning commission, or were those changes not needing to be approved?
I don't know if they need to be approved. I sure hope not.
They weren't, there really aren't changes to the integrity of the plan and just some more specifics?
No, not really. It changes the looks a little bit. I think it actually makes it look better. Everybody seems to think so. The original plan called for one great big roof to go over an existing office, and...
Can you unroll your thing and just point to us for those differences? Maybe Ms. Farquhar can hold it or something.
Okay, this is, this is what I called an office. Right now, it's being used as an office. Actually, it'll be a bedroom. But the original design called for the roof to go from this point up to the middle here and down over what I call the existing office. The new plan is a separate roof, and we leave this roof intact. It helps with the construction process, getting into the fall especially now. It would have required having this all cut open for two to three weeks and exposed to the weather. This leaves us all intact.
Okay.
We put a new roof. The roof is now centered with the addition. The peak of the roof gives it a more balanced look instead of being off-center. It's actually just a better design for quite a few reasons.
Okay. And the materials and things like that, that were approved by design review, you're still using the same materials and all that?
Yep, same windows, same siding, same roofing.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. De.
Where's the property line in relation to the addition side of the building? Is it on that side of the building? How far are you away from the property line on that side? There's no site plan here. I was just curious.
I believe it's five foot away.
Okay, so it's a minimal amount for that addition from the property line?
Yeah, there's a foot to spare from the property line for what's allowed.
Okay. And there's a house, there's another house on the other side of you there, on the opposite side?
No, there's an empty lot.
It's empty lot?
On the east side where the addition will be, next to me, is an empty lot. But it's well within the regulations of the property line. And actually, it's set back from the front of the house, so that you really won't notice it from the front. It's set back far enough that it starts, you know, toward the south.
Yeah, if you're looking at the front of the house, you'll see 10 foot of new addition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you. Thank you for your time. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this zoning change? Hearing none. Anybody here against this zoning change? Anybody here against this zoning change? Hearing none. I believe we have a special guest that happened to be an intern, from what I understand. I welcome Mr. Mel Witherspoon's granddaughter. She's going to present the city's side of this zoning change, and we also want to welcome all her classmates at Mercyhurst who are watching today. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Bailey Witherspoon. I intern at the zoning office. Honorable mayor, president, members of council, the City of Erie Planning Commission at their regular meeting on July 16, 2013, reviewed a waterfront conditional use proposal for a two-story addition to property located at 359 Short Street. The addition will be behind and extend out towards the east property line. The addition will match the siding and shingles of the existing house, and the addition's windows will be of similar character to the existing house. On July 3, 2013, the owner Judith Farrar and her contractor Bob Rose provided the design review committee with material samples and photographs. The design review committee unanimously approved this request. The planning commission reviewed the proposal and was satisfied with the addition, keeping a near-exact color material scheme as the existing house. They unanimously voted that council approved the request.
Thank you very much. Any questions, council?
Mr. President.
Of course. Mr. Witherspoon.
I'm paying a lot of money for her to be in school. Do a good job, sweetheart.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you for coming today, Bailey. I appreciate your internship in the office there, and you did a great job. I do have a question, and I'm not sure if I should direct it to you or Mr. Shumani. If you can both come up.
Probably Bailey.
Bailey, you might know it. No, no, no. Hold on. The changes that Mr. Rose indicated, the minor changes in the plan, are there any questions about that from the design review or planning commission perspective?
I haven't seen the new plans, but if they're less than 20 percent changed, then it's not necessary to go through again.
Okay, and it seemed like it were just, but you will check on that?
I will.
Okay. Or you will have Bailey check on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. I believe that concludes it, Mr. Clem.
Yes, it does.
concludes our public hearing.
We go back to the regular meeting. Are we still on our committee reports?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Go Mercyhurst Prep Lakers, proud alum, 1994, 1994, and I don't know if the kids are still watching, but get back to work, especially, like Mr. Witherspoon said, we're paying a lot of money for those kids. My oldest son's a senior at Mercyhurst as well, so. And Ms. Rankunso is class of a decade before me. She was in the previous decade from when I graduated, so. Very quickly, just want to take a moment to, I think a couple of council members have already expressed gratitude and appreciation, and also congratulations for the retirement of Chief Franklin and the promotion of DJ, excuse me, Deputy Chief DJ. I just say DJ, that's why I fake it. And also Randy Bowers, too, Chief DJ Furman and Randy Bowers and their promotions. We appreciate, they've served the community well previously, and I'm sure this new position will allow them to continue to do that in a broader way and in a broader, on a broader scale. So congratulations to them, and again, thank you to Chief Franklin for all that he's done in his position as chief. Also, I'll be contacting Dennis at the EMTA to have him, ask him, request him to come into our next caucus meeting to give us some information on, based on the feedback from the public hearing we had on the EMTA route change. The biggest thing, it seemed like it came out with a lot of health and safety concerns that were brought up by the community members, as well as several members of council. So we want to kind of get a bit of a report out from him, excuse me, to find out where they're at, what their processes are, if there are processes in place to address those concerns of the citizens. Also, I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor's office and all of the staff there in City Hall that put on Celebrate Erie. We haven't had an opportunity, our last meeting was kind of long and had a public hearing and all that, so we forewent our committee reports. But I think it's important that we say thank you to all of those community members and city staff, et cetera, who put on that great event. You know, it's one of those things where you're never going to please everyone, so don't try, but you do what's best with what you have to work with, and I think this year, just as every other year, was a success and was able to unify and have one of, a great summer festival here in the city that we always do, Celebrate Erie, as well as all the other festivals and events that we have. Eight Great Tuesdays and, you know, the Roar on the Shore, all those things add to the quality of life. And I might not be crazy about Roar on the Shore, because I don't like bikes, but man, I enjoyed Eight Great Tuesdays. Even the country music at the last one. Boy, if I would have had my cowboy boots on, but I didn't want to scare anybody with that. So again, we have a great quality of life here in Erie, so thank you to all organizations and groups and individuals who help adding to that through several different events and activities through the summer. We did also last week have a study session with John Elliott, the executive director at the Economic Development Corporation, about the inland port project that's happening. This regional endeavor, it's a huge, huge-scale series of projects, and I think it was good for us to kind of get a current update to where things are in relation to that project and all the component units and component parts that are happening to make that happen, both in the city, outside the city, and over several borders. I think it's a great example of a regional endeavor, which I think we need to move to as a community. One of the things that John said that stuck out to me was about the, and it's kind of a segue into what Mr. Witherspoon said, attending the, excuse me, the airport ribbon-cutting ceremony for the runway 624 project. That was a great project, but John said something, I didn't put it in that scale, $83 million, but it was a little less than three city blocks long. And it was a wonderful example of how we start out beating up on each other and having turf wars and all those things, and with municipal groups and individuals and people being very territorial, to getting beyond our own view and our own little local area, our own local desires, to go beyond that and get to a bigger view, a bigger picture. But at the end of the day, let's put it in perspective, it was less than three city blocks long. And so we have some regional needs that we need to begin to address and talk about and be honest about. And so I don't want us to, it was great to celebrate, and I think we need to always celebrate wins, but I think those celebrations should be en route to bigger wins and greater expansion of our community in celebrating what we can do in a regional way with the regional mindset. And finally, I did, as well, the mayor was there and a few other councilmen, Murzky was there at the Hispanic Heritage Festival, and I was trying to get somebody to teach me how to dance, but I may be the only black man in town that doesn't have as much rhythm as anybody else. But it was a great example of what the diversity is in our community. And so to those organizers, again, thank you for celebrating your culture as a part of our Erie community and our Erie family and adding value to us all. And there's one more thing I wanted to say, but I didn't write it down, so I don't remember what it was, but I think I've said enough already. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
I didn't see the red light. He must have forgotten. Did you forget the timer? Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just following up with Mr. Jones, like he said last meeting, we did not get to thank the administration for the Celebrate Erie. What a great program that was put on, great help from the administration, the city workers. It was incredible. Monday morning, actually Monday at 1:00, I came downtown. You would not have known, we just had a four-day event down there. The stages were gone, the streets were clean, all the roads were open. It was just incredible. But want to thank all the sponsors, the volunteers. We had a lot of volunteers out there that go unnoticed sometimes, and each and every night, they kept the property cleaned up as best they could. And we also want to thank the guy upstairs, not the mayor, but God upstairs, for the great weather, because that helps make the show go on also. Once again, I know some of the colleagues have mentioned Chief Franklin or former Chief Franklin. Want to thank him for his years of service with the city. We had a great working relationship with our council, with an open-door type policy where whenever we wanted to meet with him regarding any issue, he would be there. We are going to miss him. We wish him well and enjoy your entire retirement. Incoming Chief Bowers, from what I hear, couldn't have been a better choice out there, and we look forward to the same working relationship. We do plan on meeting within the next month, just to let him know how we as a council feel and what issues we may have or what concerns we're getting from our citizens. And hopefully, within the next month, Mr. Witherspoon will set something up, and we'll meet with the Chief Bowers. Regarding EMTA, I know they've gotten a lot of flack in the last two to three months regarding their state street route change. One thing I want to add, I guess in their favor a little bit, they do provide a lot of free service for the citizens and this community, whether it be from the different festivals, shuttling people. I know they did it at the Italian Festival, they did it at the Polish Festival, Eight Great Tuesdays. They shuttled them from the Intermogul Center, which I personally took myself, and what a great deal. Every five to seven minutes, I got a bus coming, there was short wait times, and they do do things for the community. They help to celebrate Erie naturally, as well as Discover Presque Isle, which is still a community effort. Like Mr. Jones said, we are going to meet with Mr. Seleski to go over some of the concerns regarding the changes, whether it be the lighting or the shelters, but that is going to happen in the future here, and I believe he will come forward and give us some answers that are definitely needed. The only other note, our Erie Sea Wolves are in the playoffs, so get out there and support our Sea Wolves. They're at home tonight, and I believe they're home tomorrow night, so congratulations. It's proud to have a winner in town. Thank you. Looks like we're at misadministration. Ms. Beck?
Good morning. I'd just like to thank city council for all of their support of Celebrate Erie. It is a team effort, and we couldn't do it without your support, and as a couple of council people have mentioned, the support of all of the volunteers and the city workers for keeping the city clean. Congratulations to Chief Randy Bowers sworn in yesterday, and thank you to a couple of council members for attending yesterday. Tall ships is this weekend. Looks like the weather is going to cooperate, so I hope everyone will get out and go and view the tall ships that are going to grace our city for another lovely weekend, and I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clem, I think we can wrap it up.
City council now, 9:51 a.m. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rankunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Witherspoon.